I call this special meeting of the Village of Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Start with roll call. Calvert?
Here.
Postra?
Here.
Jackson?
Case?
Here.
Bucky?
Here.
Rowlowski? Trumano? Shulinski?
Here.
I have two in presence, so we have quorum. Just want to let everybody know that this special meeting is information gathering and discussion on our part. There will be no action taken on anything this evening. Anything that comes out of this meeting will be back before us if necessary for a published public hearing in the future, but this is just information and discussion. All right. Consuelo, if you want to start with background?
Sure.
Go through it section by section?
Sure.
And then take public comment after, I think?
Sure. I can definitely start, so let me know if you could hear me. I'll go ahead and start with the requested changes that are here for you to consider for review, to have a discussion, with the hopes to take a vote in terms of if that's something that you would like to take back to P&amp;Z or what the next steps are. For direction, I'm hoping that feedback is received as part of this public, not public, but public meeting essentially. So for your review and consideration, there were tax amendments that were forwarded over specifically nine items as it relates to outdoor storage containers, and I'm going to go ahead through those requested changes. The first one is a request to strike 6.12A2. They're indicating that there may be no more than one temporary outdoor storage container per property. So the second request to strike 6.12A5, no temporary outdoor storage container may remain on the subject property for more than 60 consecutive days per year. A proposal to replace with the following, no temporary outdoor storage container may remain on the subject property for more than 90 consecutive days per year. Number three, a proposal to strike 6.12A6, as it relates to temporary outdoor storage containers, may not exceed eight feet in height or cover an area of more than 130 square feet. Proposal is to replace that with temporary outdoor storage containers may not exceed 10 feet in height or cover an area of more than 200 square feet. Moving along. Item number four is to strike 6.1287, indicating temporary outdoor storage containers must be placed only on a driveway or other hard surface. Number five, strike 6.12813, temporary outdoor storage containers may not be used for the purpose of conducting business or selling merchandise. A proposal to replace with the following, temporary outdoor storage containers may not be granted occupancy for purposes of habitation or conducting business. Number six, strike 6.12B4, indicating must be placed on a paved surface. Number seven, strike 6.12B7, screened from public view with a privacy screen, example given funds, landscaping, or similar methods. Proposal to replace that with screened from public view with a privacy screen, example given funds, landscaping, or similar methods, or painted. Number eight, strike 6.12B13, may not be used for the purpose of conducting business or selling merchandise. A proposal is to replace that with may not be granted occupancy for purposes of habitation or conducting business. And number five, strike 14.22F, which is a definition of a shipping container is a standard reusable vessel designed without an axle or wheels, which was. Replace that first part of that definition with shipping container, a type of outdoor storage container, is a standard reusable vessel designed without an axle or wheels, which was, and so forth. Some quick background information. The village received an anonymous complaint in 2020 of about 30 properties throughout the village with shipping containers on the property. Upon review and follow-up, the community development department found about 10 businesses with either no containers or with containers that were being used on a temporary basis for seasonal sales, and issued about 20 notices to properties that were found to have containers on the property in violation. At that time, the direction the community development director received was to prepare tax amendments relating to containers that would allow the use of containers as long as they were located in the rear of the property and screened. Recent inspections found about 30 properties throughout the village with permanent storage containers. Moving forward, on October 11th, 2021, the village board approved tax amendments that permitted outdoor storage containers subject to code regulations, both for temporary outdoor storage containers and permanent outdoor storage containers subject to regulations. So the items for you for consideration for discussion at tonight's meeting is items one through nine that are on the first page of the memo that was provided to you.
All right, thank you. Just to clarify, the ones that were read, the first five, the A, those are all related to temporary outdoor storage containers in non-residential districts. And six through nine, which are the 6.12B, those are all related to permanent outdoor storage containers in non-residential property, correct? None of this is affecting residential property?
Correct.
Okay.
And let me just clarify, six through eight are permanent outdoor storage container language. Nine is-
All right, nine is the definition.
Exactly.
Correct, nine is the definition. All right. I would say, let's go through these pretty quick and discuss them. We've had some discussion on them in the past. But the first one is striking 6.12A2, there may be no more than one temporary outdoor storage container per property in its entirety, replacing it with nothing. Comments on that?
From up here?
Yeah.
Why would we not want to limit the number of outdoor storage containers on a temporary basis?
I'm of the opinion that we should limit it to something.
Yeah. I mean, we go from one to nothing, to one that you can have 20.
Right. And keeping in mind this is temporary, but still-
I mean, I know I have seen multiple of those moving ones left on a driveway, and they've had a couple, so it does exist. But to say that they could have 15 of them on their driveway would be an issue I wouldn't want to live next to that.
That's a good point, though, for residential, but here we're only dealing with commercial. So when you say driveway, if I'm inferring correctly, you're saying driveway of residential property.
Okay.
For a commercial entity to require or even request more than one temporary outdoor container, which I agree, I think that one is sufficient. However, if there is a very specific business need for more than one, perhaps staff can weigh in on this, wouldn't there be a process to request an additional container, either from staff or from planning and zoning up to a board level, to simply request and indicate, I have a hardship, these are the reasons for the hardship, the potential relief would be an additional temporary storage container for either X amount of days, or additional container on top of the one that I'm allowed, or that the business would be allowed on a temporary basis?
Yeah, there's always the variation process for that, that would be very unique to the property and the circumstances that the petitioner is seeking that variation for, to allow the number that they are seeking.
Right. And, you know, my concern would be that, so you say there's no limit on the number of outdoor storage containers, and then you say that, you know, they can be on the property for 60 or 90, or whatever the time limit is, there's almost no way of keeping track of what's been on the property for how long, and seems like it would be a code enforcement nightmare. I understand that we may have a handful of users, say a Walmart or a Target, that has a demand for more than one, but when there's a process for relief from that-
If I may?
Yeah.
My issue, even before we get into those sorts of nuances of sort of this putting into practice, if this is, if we eliminate the text completely that says nothing about our limitations on the number, then the text is there that allows for the permitting of these containers. And so if the text says it's not, it doesn't even make reference to it, then even when a request for one comes in, it's going to have to get approved, it's going to have to get sort of accepted somehow. There's nothing that says, oh, one is limited. It's not saying unlimited, it's, there's not even a reference to it. And so for it to come in through, it's going to have to get passed through this body somehow, some way, which doesn't make any sense. It's like we should, to at least say, one is permitted, and then if anybody's going to go beyond that and make a request for additional containers based on their particular business operation, then make the request for more. But the assumption can't be that I'm going to do what I'm, because by eliminating the text does not give anybody a number to sort of pick or settle on. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So I would say it sounds like there's not much consensus for increasing that number on a regular basis, yes?
I think we got to take in consideration, they're going to be able to beat this anyway, because you could put a camper in your backyard, be able to put a pod in your backyard.
We're talking about commercial properties, not talking about residential properties. So that's a different, that is a different thing.
This, just for your reference, Don, this language does come largely from, even though it's modified, and we do have a similar ordinance for residential pods. They're a little stricter because, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, and you don't want somebody having a half dozen pods in their front yard, or in the, you know, in the front yard, or whatever. I guess the only question that would, I think, striking it is, is there's consensus that we don't want to strike, making an unlimited number, is that what I'm hearing? Mm-hmm. Okay. I guess the question would be, is there, is there a need to have some sort of sliding scale or other option, other than a variation process for the few larger users that we might have, keeping in mind that storage containers that would be part of a construction permit would be part of the construction permitting process, and that would be something wholly different. That obviously wouldn't be limited, you know, say, the garden station project, they need a half dozen temporary storage containers to do that project, or whatever. That would be part of that permitting process and separate. Do you have an idea, Consuelo, of how many users we might have on a, or is that something you could look into?
With containers?
Yeah, well, with more than one, temporary or permanent.
Yeah, I would say, based on the recent inspection, we have about seven or eight.
Okay.
Just an estimate, quick estimate based on recent inspections.
That have multiple temporary containers?
No, permanent. Yeah, permanent.
Okay, we're talking about temporary right now.
Yeah. And they might be permanent, obviously, we don't know until they come in for a permanent review, if they're temporary basis or permanent, but based on the recent inspections that we found, we found a number of properties with more than one.
And that all falls in the category of permanent, at least. We don't know what it is, technically.
Correct.
They're there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, I would be, since there's a permitting process, I'd be in favor of leaving it at one and allowing them to seek relief if they need relief, because I just don't believe that we have enough users that need that relief to potentially create the Wild West of temporary storage containers, and create what could be, I think, an enforcement issue. I mean, it's already hard enough to enforce without telling people they can have as many as they want. Does that seem to be consensus, just so we have a-
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Just for a clarification, the relief would be through a variance process?
It could be, yes.
Is there other, what else?
I don't know if there's, I mean, the other thing would be, theoretically, you might be able to add it as something that could be an administrative adjustment, rather than a variation. That would require changing other parts of the code.
Right.
But that would be-
That would require coming up with some standard for when those administrative adjustments would be granted.
Right.
That would be before you for review and recommendation, if that's-
That's-
Those are the two that we have available to us in terms of going beyond or outside of-
Yeah, I mean, without, I mean, yeah, especially with temporary, you know, permanent, you could, you could make it part of a PUD or a variation process or something. Condition of a use.
Sure.
Okay.
Now, this is all, I think, as we're giving our own opinions on the face of it, obviously, we're going to have public input-
Yes.
-part of our hearing today, and, you know, I obviously welcome and look forward to hearing and having public discussion on this, or hearing from the public, considering all these line items. You know, I think that we brought up Walmart and Target, of how we would, you know, potentially interact with them, or how this would apply to them. I would really welcome Target and Walmart and other large big box stores to become more active in Villa Park and come to us about their issues, including potentially needing variances for temporary outdoor storage containers. I'd like them to be more involved in Villa Park. They bring in a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue, and I'd welcome their opinions on these matters, and if that means sending a representative manager or corporate counsel to request the variance, I think that we give them the same set of rules that everybody else, every other business needs to abide by in town. So I would welcome that.
Yeah, I've been involved in some of those from the other side of the dais, and they have teams specifically for doing those sorts of things, and if they think it's worth their time, they would do it. All right. Next item is, no temporary outdoor storage container may remain on the subject property for more than 60 consecutive days per year, being replaced with no temporary outdoor storage container may remain on the subject property for more than 90 consecutive days per year. So that's a change from 60 consecutive days to 90 consecutive days. Anybody have strong thoughts on that one or the other?
I'm fine.
You're fine with 60?
No, I'm fine with 90.
90? Just making notes, give me a second here. Anybody else think on that one?
For me, it's a toss-up. Obviously, I think I can see the benefit of giving businesses in our commercial districts an additional one month for certain seasonal items, if they need to store things. I think where I'm going to rest on this is the amount of public input that we get on this, and obviously, in hopes that staff can provide us with some sort of additional memo, or any additional information of opinions on how the various departments come down on a request to extend that out a month.
Yeah, I'm certainly going to request that wherever our consensus is on these, when it comes time for a public hearing, assuming there is a public hearing on these, I'm going to definitely have Consuelo weigh in with staff's thoughts on where we're at, because if you, obviously, Consuelo, if you have opinions tonight, speak up at any point, because you're the one that has to enforce them, so. But I don't want to put you on the spot on anything without time to think about the ramifications for you and the code enforcement officials and-
Sure.
-your day-to-day job, since you are the one responsible for making sure they get taken care of. Anyone down on the, my right have thoughts on it?
I'm just not, I see staying with 60 is sort of, this is fine.
Okay.
We already went through the process, it sounds like, making a change for the sake of change doesn't seem-
Yeah.
...the best reason.
Any other strong opinions, one way or the other? I mean, I, truthfully, I think it's kind of six of one, 90 days of the other. If it was 120 days, or, it's getting kind of long, but- So it's looking like that's a possibility, depending on what kind of what we get from public feedback on that one. There's at least one or two who are okay changing it, and it sounds like Eric's the only one who has a somewhat strong opinion against changing it, so we'll see what we get on public feedback on that one. Temporary outdoor storage containers may not exceed eight feet in height or cover an area more than 130 square feet, being changed to not exceed 10 feet in height or cover an area of more than 200 square feet. I know I've looked into this a little bit, I think those dimensions come from the standard pod dimensions, the typical temporary storage container, but I know that's not what, generally what, like, say Walmart uses. They've got larger pods. Anybody have any comments or thoughts on that one? I think, I think what would make sense to me would be to use the dimensions that work out to permitting the typical storage container, if anybody knows those.
A shipping container?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So there's 10, 20, and 40-foot lengths on those? They're eight and a half feet tall, and they're eight feet wide, they're modular units.
Okay, so 20 is the one that we would typically see used on a temporary basis, probably correct?
Yeah, that's 160 square feet, then, by 20.
All right, does anybody have a problem with changing that to match kind of the industry standard for a 20-foot pod, I mean, a 20-foot shipping container?
No, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, so then, I would use the dimensions, however they work best in the text, but it's a height of eight and a half feet, width of eight feet, the length of 20 feet, and an area of 160 square feet. So that's a typical 20-foot pod. I think 40-foot pods on a temporary basis all over is probably not necessary, and if it is, they can ask for relief. Does it seem like we have consensus for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Looks like it. I'm seeing nods everywhere. Okay, 6.12A7, temporary outdoor storage containers may, must be placed only on a driveway or other hard surface, keeping in mind that this is for temporary storage containers Personally, I'm not in favor of changing that. I don't think the temporary outdoor storage container of 160 square feet and who knows how many tons in a grass yard for 90 days is good for anyone. That's my opinion. I'd be interested to hear what anybody else says.
Especially the ones that's dropping it off and picking it up. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, okay, so consensus would be to not change that one. A13, temporary outdoor storage containers may not be used for the purpose of conducting business or selling merchandise, changed to may not be granted occupancy for purposes of habitation or conducting business. So this sounds mostly like a cleanup of, or modification of language, a little bit of a cleanup, or- Comments on that?
Yeah, when I see the word habitation get thrown in there, that, to me, that indicates sort of living houses, residences, habitating. This is obviously non-residential properties, so by default, we're not even entering into that sort of use, and so then when we start to put that in, it starts to get a little confusing, at least, that's how I see it when I see the word habitation.
I know we, when we went through these before, that was one where we kind of went around and around about the best way to get to, they're only supposed to be used for storage, and not conducting business or any other use. I don't know if there's a way to clean up the language, or if we need to clean up the language, but if we are going to suggest other changes, it looks like we're going to suggest it- to suggest at least one in the dimension, then this would be a good opportunity to clean up the text too, if we think it needs to be. Does the lawyer all the way to my left have any thoughts on that?
I do. Current language of may not be used for, then it goes into the purpose of conducting business or selling merchandise. Very clean cut, indicates that what it cannot be used for. The potential new language or the proposed replacement language says that it may not be granted occupancy. My understanding that a commercial storage container that's not part of the principal structure likely never be given occupancy in the first place. The change to purpose versus granted occupancy then changes from selling merchandise to habitation. Habitation will also never be an issue because it's a commercial property versus a residential property. Selling merchandise, we were very specific that we do not want business owners actually using the storage container as, you know, a pseudo-open forum where cash and/or other payment transactions are conducted. It is for storage and temporary storage only. It is not for a subsequent point-of-sale system. We were very particular and specific during the meetings earlier this year in which I believe several of the attendees today were present. I don't think anybody from the public then spoke up when we were going through these. I think that we were very particular about the language. I think staff gave us very good recommendations on how to craft that language. And my gut, where I'm at right now, says don't change unless there is heavy public input or unless staff agrees with that change for very specific reasons.
Yeah, I think I would lean that way. I don't think the language necessarily makes anything any more clear. If it needs to be cleared up or made more concise, you know, I'd welcome any input you might have between now and the public hearing if you think there's an opportunity to clear that up. And I think it's pretty clear, but... Yeah, that's my thoughts on that one. Any other thoughts on that?
Nope.
All right. All right, so now we're moving on to permanent shipping containers of which permit is required. And this property has a principal building on it, meaning you can't just have it on one on a vacant, like in the middle of a parking lot or a vacant lot. So first we have, they must be placed on a paved surface being struck. If we're requiring a permit and someone wants it on a permanent basis, I don't see how it's... I will defer to the architects and contractors and folks that are up here, but I can't see the value of not it being a minimum of a compacted stone base at a minimum.
Yeah.
But paved surface would be ideal. On a permanent basis, these things weigh tons when they're full. First couple freestalls, they'd be buried, I mean not buried, yeah, you wouldn't be able to get one out. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first of all, you're going to have to put about a 12-inch slab of concrete there to hold some of these things.
Right.
And you're really putting a burden on some of these business owners by doing that when they already got them on gravel or something that have been there for 30 years.
Yeah, and so I can, that's the thing I can understand and maybe there's something we can do in that regard because there's, there is a difference between, even though the storage containers weren't permitted previously, so, I mean, they're all technically illegal, for lack of a better word. They're not to code, they're not to ordinance. But I do understand that there are some existing and there is some hardship with requesting people, you know, raise those, put foundations under them and so on. But if you're looking to do one going forward at a minimum again, it needs to be on some sort of base, right?
I would just go whatever you grandfathered in right now, if it's new.
Yeah, is there, I mean, is there thoughts on that?
I do take somewhat of an issue with just turning a blind eye to the potentially, I think you said 30 odd potential permanent containers right now without a permit and just saying, we approved of it being unauthorized or we now approve it having in the past been unauthorized, but now we're just going to turn a blind eye and not require you to follow any of the particular parameters that are outlined in 6.12B for a permanent container. Don, you raise a good point of potentially they were on non-paved surfaces such as, you know, the stone chips. Maybe this is particular language that we can edit instead of striking. And the editable language or the proposed edits to 6.12B4. Jason, like you, I defer to construction architect experts along with staff to potentially propose maybe more vast language rather than paved surface. But on its face, I don't think paved surface is a bad place to start.
No, and, yeah, but...
No, I mean, on a temporary basis, we're saying they need to be on a driveway or a hard surface.
Right.
Okay, we're going to say permanently, we don't care what it is?
Yeah, no, I think...
So I would think it's got to be a paved surface or compacted stone base.
Yeah, I think moving forward, at a bare minimum, moving forward, that needs to be the standard. And the question is, how do we, or do we address the existing, I mean, they are...
Existing nonconformities.
They're existing nonconformities, but they're not existing nonconformities that were created by a change in our code. They've never been conforming since, unless they predate the 1970 zoning ordinance, they've never been conforming. So I understand both my far right and my far left on this one. I'm kind of in the middle on it because I, moving forward, I would not want to see them on anything but a paved surface. You know, I might be able to accept, you know, an engineered stone base, something that would pass the permit, but we don't even allow that for parking cars. You have to pave a minimum of asphalt to park a car in our village. And these weigh many, many cars. So I guess the question is, do we want staff to, or do we want to discuss the possibility of grandfathering or finding out how many might be in that situation? Do, Consuela, do you have a sense of how many are, I mean, just, not something that sworn testimony because we're not in a public hearing, but do you have a sense of how many of these are like on driveways, parks, I mean driveways or foundations versus sitting, you know, in grass or dirt on? I know we have some that are probably sitting on like half vacant lots on North Avenue or something like that where there's no pavement anymore, but on like actual functioning businesses where they would be able to get this permit. Do you have a sense of like a rough percentage or?
I will say that the majority are on unimproved surfaces. It's definitely difficult to see from the right of way or the public right of way because a lot of these structures are tucked behind a building or on the side and there's, you know, there might be a barrier there, so it'd be difficult to verify what the surface that they're on is. But some are on paved surfaces, but the majority I would say are probably not, meaning they're in their yard. But I don't have a clear idea of how much without having inspection of the structure within private property.
Okay. So it sounds like no one has an issue with requiring a paved surface moving forward, correct? Everybody's okay with that language? Okay, so then I guess that would leave, and maybe this is where some public input could come in, whether or not this is an extensive enough of a problem hardship to these property owners where we need to consider some sort of grandfathering, even though the use isn't technically, was never conforming. But I certainly understand, Don, your concern with the hardship. All right, so I think we have a consensus on that one, to not change the meat of it, but consider whether or not there's an option for the existing. 6.12B7, screen from public view with a privacy screen, e.g. fence landscaping or similar methods, replace with screen from public view with privacy screen landscaping or similar methods or painted. If I remember our conversation from that public hearing when we crafted this originally, the or similar methods was intended to allow staff the flexibility to permit something like painting or other types of cladding or similar materials, a trellis,
That's what I remember.
Something other than a straight-up fence. I don't necessarily know that adding or painted makes that more clear, and in fact, all of these things are painted. They roll off the truck painted. Doesn't say painted to match. So I think the or similar methods gives staff all they need to work with unless somebody else up here has a strong opinion on that one or the other.
I reviewed the transcript and your recollection is correct.
All right, 6.12B13, may not be used for the purpose of conducting business or selling merchandise. This is the same as the one above. Consensus from up here was that there wasn't a need to change that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see a need to change it for permanent versus temporary unless staff thinks there's language that could clear it up. That you want to, you know, clear up this, if you think there's a need to clear up this text in any way, you know, between now and the public hearing, please come back to us with modified text, but I think it's pretty clear what the intent of that segment, section And then strike 14.2.22F, shipping container, is a standard reusable vessel designed without an axle or wheel, which was, and then the definition continues, or replace with shipping container, a type of outdoor storage container, is a standard reusable vessel designed without an axle or wheels, which was, and then the definition continues. So I think the purpose of this is to bring the definition in line with the rest of the definitions. If you look at the definitions in the full draft of the ordinance, which I have here somewhere, you will see that the definitions are a word with a colon followed by the definition. That's the standard, the way they're formatted grammatically, whereas this one that was added is slightly different. It doesn't include a colon. So that's one thing that that's fixing, and I'm certainly fine with picking up a grammatical error. In fact, I'm disappointed I didn't find it when we updated the zoning ordinance a few years ago. But let's see, shipping container is a standard reusable vessel, change it to a type of outdoor storage container, is a standard reusable vessel. Any thoughts or comments on that one? On whether it's changing anything of consequence other than the colon or anything we need to, how does it read to you, Justin?
The difference is the inclusion of the term, a type of outdoor storage container, correct?
Yeah, so that's, oh yeah, I see what you're saying.
That's the actual, I mean, besides the very well-pointed-out grammatical issue.
Yeah, so that is an addition, you're correct. Is that necessary? I mean, is it changing it to shipping container? And then just a standard reusable vessel designed without an axle or wheel? Do we need to add the storage part or storage in any way?
I don't see the point. I don't, personally, I, well, hang on, actually. So if you go to the code online right now,
Yes.
It actually reads the term 14.2.22F, shipping container, colon, a standard reusable vessel, comma, designed without an axle or wheels, which was, colon, and then subsets 1 and 2, which I believe everybody has in front of them. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So the colon, semicolon issue might have actually, somewhat have already been taken care of, or maybe on page three of our memo, the initial container, the initial colon after the word container might end up, for some reason, not been included. But I'd like to go off of the online code, which, Consuela, you can verify, but the online municipal code is the most currently updated version, correct?
Correct, and the codifier takes the ordinances that the board approves and then makes the changes to the website code. So that's the latest.
Gotcha. So I still think that the actual change for this potential revision is the inclusion of the term of a type of outdoor storage container, which, I guess inherently, I already think of a shipping container as an outdoor tangible item.
Especially with the one point, the one point and two point sort of following, you know, the...
Packing, cargo movement, transportation of freight, capable of being mounted onto a railcar, truck trailer, or loaded on a ship inherently. It does seem as though our own definition infers that it's a type of outdoor storage container. I think that's a really good point.
Yeah, so if that codified version online is the latest, it includes the ordinance as passed, was that passed about a month ago, two months? It's all over.
In October.
Okay, so is that, that is included in the online version currently?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to fix the colon then because somebody fixed it between here and there, which is good. The codifier got it. So is there any need to add a type of outdoor storage container? I think it's clear from the definition.
Mm-hmm.
Is anyone opposed to that line of thought? All right.
I just don't know how you would think that a shipping container could be used for an indoor purpose. Unless you're using it actually...
I think it's the other way around. I think it's some sort of inside container that you're saying, oh, I shipped my, you know, my luggage, you know, across country and now I'm using that out on my, in my, you know, back lot.
Which would never get a permit. That would never be approved.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying.
No.
Shipping container, I mean, it's just like, well...
No, yeah, under that train of thought, if somebody brings an indoor container... No, yeah, under that train of thought, if somebody brings an indoor container to consular staff and says, "I want a permit for this to be used as a permanent outdoor storage container, or outdoor shipping container to be used on my commercial lot." Hey, to break it to that person, but you'd be laughed out of the office.
Yes. It's pretty clear that the shipping container, the outdoor storage container, I mean, we're looking for the engineered structural, the permanence that is these structures, and they're being used more and more in creative ways too, which I like seeing. I've seen, I mean, they're building apartments out of them. We don't have that in our code, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. All right, so I think that's all of the issues that were before us. Does anybody up here have any more thoughts, comments, anything we missed on those before we open it up to public comment?
I just have a question for staff, and obviously, we can get further into this in January meeting later, but how have conversations been going with the current, I think the term was nonconforming, the current nonconforming businesses in town with relation to, you know, probably just giving them copies of the approved language, indicating, you know, you have such and such time to work with us to get into compliance? Has staff in the manager's office been making some progress on that?
Well, I could say that there is only one building permits in middle for one of the, but it's not there now, so I have not received any applications from businesses that have them to permit them. I will say that those businesses that have containers in the properties were notified of this meeting here tonight, that were invited, and the original notices that went out about a year ago. There is very little, if any, feedback from them, contact with the village.
Okay, so similar to what was addressed at our meeting on Thursday, this might come down to an enforcement issue?
Correct, correct. I would say we definitely have made progress in that we did codify some language allowing them, but they do need to go through the permitting process and adhere to the guidelines that were approved by the board.
I guess the other thought I would have, just as we're looking at these, let's see if I make sure I'm not missing it. While we require a permit, we do not put any size limitations on permanent outdoor storage containers. Is that something we need to do? Or should we leave that up to, since they're being permitted, they would count against lot coverage, and they need to be a standard shipping container. So even if someone wanted a larger one for their needs, they would still have to get it permitted and meet lot coverage. So I don't, does anybody think there's a need to add a size limit on that? Or is that something staff may want to consider between now and the next public hearing? I could see the argument for not needing it at all, given lot coverage, permitting, the fact that we're requiring them to use standard shipping containers. But anybody have a thought on that?
I do, I agree with you, not sort of narrowing down the field when you start to say shipping containers and you're only dealing with a handful of three, right? 10, 20, and 40 foot lengths.
Right, because, I mean, the, take a site the size of Walmart. Say they wanted a permanent, wanted to call one a permanent container at the back of their property. Their property and their drives are more than big enough to handle a full-size trailer in their back alley if that's what they want. Whereas, and that would, you know, they'd be putting on an existing impervious surface, so it's not increasing lot coverage, whereas, you know, business, say on Villa Avenue, they don't have the area for it, they're not going to meet lot coverage requirements for a full-size one. So I would think it's not necessary, but I would say look into that, think about that. If you have an opinion on that between now and the public hearing, something to add if we're going to add, since we are going to be changing a few things. All right, if there's no other comments up here, we'll take public comment. Okay, so it's not a public hearing, I'm not going to ask anyone to be sworn in. You don't need to be under oath. But if you are going to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you've got a complicated last name, spell it for the court reporter. And if anyone wants to speak, now's your chance.
She's got my notes. Thanks.
Okay, on the temporary storage containers, the first item where you have no more than one, I think that's what you guys talked about leaving that way. And I was just wondering, like, for Walmart, because they seasonally have more than one container. Would it be maybe, and then they would have to come in for permits for the other additional ones. Maybe it'd be easier just to make it, you know, maybe put a number on there, like two or three, or leave it as it is. You know, I'm not really that sold on, a little flexible on that too, but I just wondered, are they going to come? They don't come now for a permit, so I don't know if they'll come. And are we going to go there and write them a ticket? So, maybe we will, so. I agree with you on item number three there about leaving the language there, but changing the size. Just make it eight and a half by 20, like you guys recommended. You know, I would hate to think of a 10-foot high. You know, that's about as high as that accent is molding up there on the wall, I would guess. That's what I would guess, and that's pretty high. And if it was that high, how could you possibly screen it? What would you screen it with?
Right.
You know, so. So I think the eight and a half by 20 would be sufficient there. On the, on the permanence, on number six, you know, so you were struggling to place on a paved surface. I could say maybe you could go down, except for existing ones, the ones existing before the certain date. Then after that, if there are ones in, or if there's a replacement, then maybe it should be on some type of a hard surface. So I think that would probably be an easy answer for that. And definitely, even in the, in the permanent one, you might want to say no stacking. I don't know if that's anywhere in the code now, but.
It is.
It is?
It was in the temporary, but I don't see it in the permanent.
So.
Yes, it is.
B6.
B6 is actually stacking of outdoor storage containers is prohibited, so that does exist.
So that's in there?
Yep.
And, okay, so that's, that's good, so. And then, question, I think that's all I had right here. Size fencing on the permanent ones? Yeah, it's on there, number seven, so. Okay, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public witness speak on this? All right, so that would be the end of that item of business, unless anybody's got any other comments. All right, anybody have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? All right.
I hope that everybody has a very healthy and safe holiday season.
Yeah, so I do want to make a couple of comments real quick. It's the end of the year, so I guess it's kind of a State of the Union. We're a pretty unique commission. We've got a wide range of diverse volunteers with having contractor, architect. I think we've got at least one engineer, planner. We've got an attorney for the first time in a while, which is always good to have. But we're also unique because we are authorized under the State Enabling Act in our role as a plan commission, and our records are subject to administrative review by the circuit court if any of these projects were ever to be questioned for process. So that makes us distinctly different than a number of the commissions. We really wear four hats up here. The most boring hat is the administrative hat. And that is, you know, reviewing administrative tax minor map amendments. I would say these don't even fall into that category. Very minor variations for fences, things that we all kind of know what we're going to vote before we get here, because staff has done their due diligence. It's the most boring hat we wear, but it's an important one too. In the last zoning ordinance update, gave staff some more review. We opened up some of the things that were available for administrative review. I think that was a good move. That was one of the best things that happened with our zoning ordinance. The next hat we wear is quasi-judicial. That is reviewing special uses and variations of substance. We take testimony, we hold public hearings, we weigh the evidence against the ordinance standards, and issue a recommendation based upon whether or not we believe the application met that burden of proof. The standards are subjectively objective, but they are standards that we review and we have to weigh evidence. We hold public hearings, and those are the most likely to be subject to potential judicial review. So that's why we have a court reporter. It's why when we have public hearings, I try to minimize crosstalk, because the record is important. And establishing that is part of the, the evidence that protects the commission, protects the village as a corporation, and protects the community at large. The third hat we wear is quasi-legislative. We're not legislators, we're not elected, but we're sitting here today crafting legislation that will be passed or modified by the village board. So we review existing ordinances. The comprehensive plan is a legislative act. The zoning map changes, like the one we had last week, are legislative act. They don't require the same standards. They should be forward-looking, and less standard-driven, and they can and sometimes should consider the political and popular will, while striving to protect the welfare of the community at heart. The reason I'm going through all this is because for the last year and a half, I've kind of been saying this, but COVID has made it tough. The fourth hat we wear is citizen planner. That process is somewhat legislative, but it dulls more deeply into long-range planning and recommendations to the village board or other commissions on items that aren't necessarily before us as an application. Issues that are important to us as a commission, to the village board, and to the community at large. Over the last year or so, I've been thinking of ways to get us as a commission more involved in the legislative and planning process, instead of what has become our primary role, more on the administrative and judicial end of the spectrum. Most of our commissioners up here have never actually been part of the planning process in any vision setting sense. And that's probably, as far as the Enabling Act for Plan Commissions, admittedly, we're a combined planning commission and zoning board of appeals essentially. But that vision setting, that comprehensive plan, that is, that is the heart of the planning, Plan Commission Enabling Act, is that forward-looking comprehensive plan. And not just the comprehensive plan, but the plans that go into it. And if you read the ordinance creating the Plan Commission, you will also see the areas where we have opportunity to advise the village at large on other planning items. I think we have a good team up here that could offer a lot of advice on a lot of projects, not just those that come before us from private developers. So to make a long story longer, I'm not resigning, I'm not going anywhere. But next year, I would like to have a, early in the year, have a goal-setting meeting and work towards some workshop meetings perhaps, or maybe extending the time towards the end of meetings when we have shorter agendas. Like, tonight would be a good night to extend for another hour, a half hour, an hour and a half, talk about planning things. If there's not members of the public, and even if there are, maybe even recessing to the committee of the whole room and discussing around the table instead of at the dais. Some examples of goals could be, are there ordinance passages that we could modernize? I know there are. We updated the zoning ordinance, for sure, a couple of years ago, with a contractor. But some of that language did come directly from the old ordinance, and, you know, the amount of time and effort that they could put into it financially was somewhat limited, was also limited, because at the time, that was when the state was not sending out the tax shares to the municipalities in a timely manner. And so that put the contractors, we went about six months without meeting with them because the contractors didn't get a check from anybody. That wasn't the village's fault, that was the state's fault. Another item would be, is it time to revisit the comprehensive plan in whole or in part? I think there's certainly an argument to be made that some portions of the village are ripe for reevaluating, even if the entire comprehensive plan doesn't need to be updated. Do we want to explore options like requiring site plan review or appearance review for certain types of projects? That's, that is something that is common in municipalities around us. For projects of certain sizes or in certain zoning districts or certain uses, site plan review or appearance review is mandatory. That, that may be something to consider. These are just things that cross my mind today, not necessarily all things we need to do, but things for discussion. Are there long-term goals for the village that we as a commission would like to offer a recommendation to the community or the board? Are there long-term goals that the village board would like us to explore? There may be. And so those are some of the ideas that I had, and I would like us to talk about that next month, maybe, if we have the time to do it, if not, soon after. I guess the last thing that I would say is, when I joined this commission, we had Plan Commissioner memberships with the American Planning Association. That was part of what we spent our annual budget on. And to get a little detailed, it's $121 to sign up and $68 per member for annual membership. I think that probably falls well within our budget. But I might consider that. The Plan Commissioners Journal that's published, I think, quarterly, maybe monthly, I don't remember anymore, was a very useful tool that kept Plan Commissioners up to date on what was going on in the legal world, because what a lot of people don't understand about planning and zoning is that we've gotten to where we are through 125 years of litigation, all the way to the Supreme Court on what zoning means, what are landowners' rights. And the decisions that we make are based on those cases and the changes in laws. And it's a rapidly changing field. It's my profession, and I have to do continuing education, and I can barely keep up with it. So if that's something in our budget, we might want to consider that. I know we were for years, I think. I know we were for years, I think, I don't remember, maybe five or six years ago, maybe it was when Director Grill took over, I don't remember, it kind of fell off at some point, uh, but worth looking into for a few hundred bucks. There's a, as you know, I'm sure, Consuela, there's a wealth of, uh, information through the APA. So that's all I've got. Anybody have anything to comment on that?
Sounds like a great idea.
All right, so.
Chairman Jared, I have something to add.
Yeah.
So I want to make the point that besides, uh, the proposed, um, items for your consideration tonight, there are three other items that I plan to also, um, bring up at the January meeting.
Okay.
With proposed changes, as it relates to section 6.11.2E, 6.11.2G7, and 6.11. So, sure. 6.11.2, 6.11.2G7, 6.11.2G12. And the proposal for those are to strike those from the code. E specifically is in regards to display, um, in all commercial districts, the display for a period of not, not exceed 90 days of seasonal items, such as guarding and patio equipment and supplies. Uh, G7 is indicating no entertainment, whether live, recorded, or otherwise, is permitted in the outdoor seating area, to strike that. And the third, um, item that's being proposed to strike is G12, an occupancy permit is required prior to the opening of the outdoor seating area. The occupancy permit is valid from March 1st through November 30th and must be renewed annually. Outdoor furniture must be removed within 24 hours of permit expiration. So those are three additional items that I'm hoping, um, we could take together with the items that were discussed here tonight.
All right. Sounds good. Um, other than Merry Christmas, and, uh, I'm glad to see that, even though the dais isn't full tonight, our commission's full for the first time in a few years, I think, completely full with everybody at the same time. Uh, Dawn and Eric, it's been good having you on, and, uh, look forward to hopefully many years of, of continued service, and to the continuing members who've been here for a while. It feels like forever, but it's really not. So, uh, Merry Christmas to everybody, and, uh, we'll see you next year, if we don't see you sooner. We're adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everyone.